University of Boston. Big and big. Tracks with flowers that track the honeybees. Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to have everybody stand for the prayer. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It stands one name, under God, universal, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Malanazo.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Nine yeas.
Thank you. All right, I need a motion to accept and place and file minutes of the zoning subcommittee December 12th and the city council meeting December 12th for acceptance.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercia. And that's enough? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion adopted. All right, we have a motion to appoint Cormac Hondress McCarthy to the Sustainability Council. A motion to...
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second. By Counselor Conway. Does anyone want to speak on this? I'll ask Cormac Hondress to come before us. Excuse me.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Malanazo.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Nine yeas.
Thank you. I don't believe there are any reports for the subcommittee. Are there any reports? Thank you. Okay, city council motions. Motion by Counselor Mercia, request city manager to allow people of Laotian descent to acquire a site at the JFK Plaza to construct their monument.
Second.
Thank you. Second by Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a pleasure to present this motion. More than two years ago, when Counselor Rodney Elliott made a motion to have a monument for the Cambodian people, I segued in verbally this motion, and when I did, I thought it was a given, but no one can find that it's actually a motion because it isn't actually in black and white, so I want to make it formally a motion, so that is why I did that. We have people of Laotian descent here. We have Nuu. We have very gracious people that have been so wonderful to the city. I have Kampur, and I have Nuu, Krasu Kaun, and this is people that are here, and we talked about how they would be honored to have their monument. So if it's no trouble at all, I'd like to have a roll call on accepting this motion. They are here, but they did not want to speak. They wanted me to do that. That's okay, I'll do that, so, thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
How's that?
Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is a good motion, Counselor Mercia, especially in light of the fact that the city just spent, I think it was, you know, a couple hundred, over $200,000 to improve the JFK Civic Center. I know that Nuu and Kampur have been very involved in the community, and I volunteer my, you know, my service to, in any way that we can, I know along with the city, to place the monument, and this is exactly what the purpose of redesigning City Hall was, knowing that there are so many other nationalities that are very involved in this community and the way that they would, that we can honor them, so I think this is a good motion to bring this forward. It's timely, plenty of time for the, you know, the community and organization to raise money, and I think it's a good motion. Counselor Mercia.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Elliott.
Thank you. If we could have, like, a roll call for my colleagues.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Malanazo.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo.
Nine yeas.
Thank you. I don't believe there are any reports for the subcommittee. Are there any reports? Thank you. Okay, city council motions. Motion by Counselor Mercia, request city manager to allow people of Laotian descent to acquire a site at the JFK Plaza to construct their monument.
Second.
Thank you. Second by Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a pleasure to present this motion. More than two years ago, when Counselor Rodney Elliott made a motion to have a monument for the Cambodian people, I segued in verbally this motion, and when I did, I thought it was a given, but no one can find that it's actually a motion because it isn't actually in black and white, so I want to make it formally a motion, so that is why I did that. We have people of Laotian descent here. We have Nuu. We have very gracious people that have been so wonderful to the city. I have Kampur, and I have Nuu, Krasu Kaun, and this is people that are here, and we talked about how they would be honored to have their monument. So if it's no trouble at all, I'd like to have a roll call on accepting this motion. They are here, but they did not want to speak. They wanted me to do that. That's okay, I'll do that, so, thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
How's that?
Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is a good motion, Counselor Mercia, especially in light of the fact that the city just spent, I think it was, you know, a couple hundred, over $200,000 to improve the JFK Civic Center. I know that Nuu and Kampur have been very involved in the community, and I volunteer my, you know, my service to, in any way that we can, I know along with the city, to place the monument, and this is exactly what the purpose of redesigning City Hall was, knowing that there are so many other nationalities that are very involved in this community and the way that they would, that we can honor them, so I think this is a good motion to bring this forward. It's timely, plenty of time for the, you know, the community and organization to raise money, and I think it's a good motion. Counselor Mercia.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Elliott.
Thank you. If we could have, like, a roll call for my colleagues.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Malanazo.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo.
Nine yeas.
Thank you so much.
Happy New Year. Thank you very much. I feel very happy to be here, and I wish you a New Year. Win, fail, with health, happiness, and prosperity through the New Year. I feel very happy. You are very good people to serve the people in law. Very good. Every election, I need you to win. Win election every year, every year, every term. I love you. God bless you. God bless America, and God bless the city of law. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, again. All right, next we have a motion by Counselor Leahy, request the city council take a vote regarding...
Your Honor, I'm going to pull that motion. It's kind of early right now.
Thank you. Next, motion by Counselor Elliott, request city manager provide a report regarding the policy of city vehicles being taken home, the number of vehicles issued to employees, and the associated costs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Cirillo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the motion speaks for itself. I just think it's important. There was, I did receive an email, Mr. Manager, and I know you and others were copying on it, on concerns raised, and I think it's important for this entire body to get an update on how many vehicles there are, who's taking them home, and what the purpose is, and I think it's important for the public to know that as well. So, there are costs associated with it, and I, you know, I think it's important we revisit that policy and get a report from you on exactly what that policy, so we know, the people at home know, taxpayers know, that there are individuals that we need to have them take their vehicles home, you know, certain public safety officials, and certainly some public works, but, you know, who is that, and how many are there, and I think it's, and that's the essence of the motion. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else on the motion?
So adopted.
So adopted. Oh, the next is by Counselor Elliott, again, request city manager provide a report on expenditures to date regarding the feasibility study on Lowell High School and the amount reimbursed to the city from the MSBA.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercia.
Again, just to report, Mr. Manager, this comes as a result of attending the school building authority meeting over a month ago, and I know there is, there are a series of steps that have to be taken, exactly what those are, and I think it's important to know exactly how much we have spent from the feasibility and what the reimbursement rate is. Is it, is it the 79.4% that was, we originally thought was going to be the percentage for the entire school building project, which that has changed significantly from 79.8 or 78.9 down to, you know, a high, in some cases, of, you know, high 60s percent, so, and I'd like to know exactly how much is left from that, moving forward, knowing that the feasibility process will, we don't start from the beginning, but there is a significant process that we'll have to follow in order to get there, so we're just asking for a report on how much has been expended to date, and if we can get an estimate, what Skanska will be charging, or what the cost will be to move forward. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak of the motion? Counselor Leahy.
Through you to the manager. Could you also, in that report, just ask, I know you'll do it anyways, but just ask them what we're going to negotiate too, because some of the steps, you know, we weren't very happy with, so there should be some reimbursement back to the city on some of those, on the feasibility study too, so, thank you.
Okay, motion adopted. All right, next is a motion by Counselor Kennedy, request city manager and the mayor notify the Massachusetts School Building Authority that the city council attends to explore changing Lowell's preferred project option for the Lowell High School building project.
Second.
Yes, second by Mr. Conway. Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on the motion. I think that most of the city council understands the point of the motion, but just for people that are in the audience or on TV, the city recently went down to, or representatives of the city recently went down to meet with the MSBA regarding the school project, and shortly after that received a communication from the Massachusetts School Building Authority on how we should proceed, and the first step is to, is for the city to inform the Massachusetts Building Authority that they, that we intend to explore changing Lowell's preferred project option for the high school, and so that's the point of this motion, and there's, the motion right after it is, has to do with the school committee taking the same step. So this is an initial step that the city has to take if we're going to proceed with the MSBA, and since the MSBA is giving us the lion's share of the money for the project, I think that it's important that we comply with their request.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the matter? Thank you. Counselor...
Thank you. I appreciate the motion from Counselor Kennedy, but I think it goes without saying that we're going to do more than explore, so I don't know if the maker of the motion is okay with tends to change Lowell's preferred projects as opposed to exploring. I mean, I did, again...
Well, okay. If I could, Mr. Mayor, the reason that the word is, the motion is worded that way is that what, one of the things that they did in the communication is ask us to look at other options. Now, there's a lot of options that we've already looked at that we probably won't give much thought to going forward, and I also think that there's a majority of the city council that is probably in favor of option three downtown. However, since they've asked us to look at other options, and I think, I think the MSBA is thinking on this is that they just want to be sure that this time we're sure of how we're going to move forward, and so that's why the motion is worded the way it is, rather than to deal with just a specific option.
Thank you. Any further, Counselor Elliott?
Well, I, if I can just add, having been at that meeting, it was almost a requirement, if you will. I mean, they, they did more than just suggest, they said, please look at, just essentially consider, because of the cost issue associated with it, so they didn't require, you know, it wasn't a mandate, but they just said, you know, please explore, I think it was explore.
Should.
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 So I, it's not as if we're deviating, but I think in the interest of other issues associated with it, that could prevent a delay, for instance, and there was discussion about that, so, but the first is, is this clearly a good letter?
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Roll call, please, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Clerk.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Malanazo.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo.
Nine yeas.
Okay, that ends the motions. I would ask...
Mr. Mayor, there's one more motion.
I'm sorry. Mr. Kennedy, Counselor Kennedy, I'm sorry. Request school committee endorse the city council in intent to explore changing Lowell's preferred project option for Lowell High School building project, and direct the superintendent to notify the Massachusetts School Building Authority of the school committee's endorsement. Counselor? Second. Counselor Malanazo, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just if I could, I won't repeat myself. This motion is worded very much like the previous one, but this is for the school committee, and so it's just have the city council send a communication to the school committee so that they can take a similar vote, because the Massachusetts School Building Authority has requested that the school committee also take a vote on this issue, and I do believe that the matter will appear on the school committee agenda tomorrow evening.
Thank you. Any discussion on this issue? Motion's been adopted. Thank you. Before we close, I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules to be able to talk about the heating at Lowell High School. That's a question that I think a lot of us have received, some emails or texts about the heating, and I'd like to be able to, yes?
I make the motion to suspend, and can we also discuss, in addition to that, any other buildings, not just the high school?
Right. Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. That was Counselor Conway. Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much. You're 100% correct, you know, there has been some heating issues today for many buildings in the city. The Lowell Library, the Palat Memorial Library was closed today to the public because there was not sufficient heat in their minds to have the public there. We had heating issues at Lowell High School, but we also had heating issues at the Pawtucket Memorial, the Pine School, the Daly, Bartlett, McAuliffe, Greenalls. Two of our fire stations were without heat today, and as I said, the library. Most of these issues related to what we're experiencing in our own homes, is frozen pipes, and I'm not downplaying the heating issues, I'm just saying is that obviously the frigid weather has led to some of these issues. I've asked Jim Green, the head of lands and buildings, could you just come up and explain some of the issues that you're facing and what you're doing to rectify them?
Sure. We've been at Lowell High School every day for the last few weeks with either one, two, or even three people working, going classroom to classroom, when we thought we had the main boiler problems taken care of. Soon as it hit this cold, we started having problems again with the rooftops units on the 1980 building. We had repaired pumps, we had gotten the small room nine boilers, every one of them was running, and then we hit this cold weather, we started having the problems again. We had a time when we'd go patting each other on the back saying what a great job we did, and we walked out of Lowell High School with most of the temperatures in the 70s in the 1980 building, and again, the last couple of weeks have just made that a total, it just became something that we just couldn't get a hold of right away, but we are starting to catch up. The steam plant is running great, the freshman academy is running as great as it's ever going to do right now. The 22 building's running pretty good, we've had some problems today, but they're working themselves out. Raised the water temperature in the boilers in the 22 building, that brought it back up, and again, we're back on the 1980 building. That's the place where we have a lot of problems, and we have a lot of, it's more modern than the other buildings, so it takes a little bit more to do. We've got a control issue that we're working out right now with Train Corporation that should make it a lot easier for us to trace down problems. We've got parts on order that we're still waiting for because they are old units. We've got a couple of units in the gym that we have running great, two units not running great. Again, parts are ordered, they're very old units, and we have to wait for them. The main problem that we have in the 80 building, we'll go on a day where everything's pretty good, then we'll go in, in the 500 classrooms, that's the second floor, we'll have problems there. The next day, we have it in the 600, we're pretty good in the 500s, and we'll just go, and again, one, two, sometimes three guys going room to room. Once the computer system's in, that'll make it a lot easier to trace that stuff out and go right to the unit or right to the zone that we're having the problems. So, right now, that's, in a nutshell, at the high school. If there are any more questions with the other schools?
I'd just like to add...
Could I just ask one question?
Sure.
We got in the high school. When you talk about the 22 building, I mean, some information that was given to me by a parent would indicate that all the rooms in the 22 building were cold, and I cannot believe that that would be possible.
The hallways were cold, but we did do a walk-through through most of the classrooms, and they were above 65 to 72. So, we were saying, as we walked through, those rooms were okay from 65 to 72, but we did have some cold rooms.
I mean, this is historic cold, there's no question about that.
Right.
And also, we're going to ask a question about it to city manager, can, how do we check on our seniors in this, in this city and homes that might be having problems? But right now, the school is the issue. Is the high school in such a way where, at least if the principal wants to move students from one section to another, they have the capacity to move students to warm it?
I know they did it, they offered to move people from different classrooms a couple of weeks ago when we first started having the problems. I don't know what it is right now.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I talked to Superintendent Calphawi about an hour ago, and based upon the number of classrooms that are cold and that they would have to move the students to another area, they don't have the space for it, so Superintendent Calphawi told me that they're going to close Lowell High School tomorrow, and that will actually be beneficial to us because we'll be able to go in and have free rein in the school to fix whatever problems that we have, but they do not have the space to move the amount of students that are being affected, so they will be closing it tomorrow, and we'll be there in full scale tomorrow.
Something with the HVAC in all the buildings, every morning, I have three people coming in at 6 o'clock in the morning. They hit, if there's a problem in school, I'll talk with Ricky Underwood, they might go out to there, but usually it's the high school first with two people. One heads to the steam plant in the 22 building, in the freshman academy, the other one heads to the 80, and they're there all day. Today, we had to pull out, we had a few problems in some of the other buildings, we had to pull them out, but they were back there at the end of the day working. We actually had, in the kitchen, we had ice on one of the things, I'm sure you saw the Facebook picture of the ice on one of the steam kettles at the kitchen, that won't happen now, because right now it's 70 degrees when we left today. But again, that was the freezing cold temperatures, and they weren't running the kitchen last week. They have a makeup part of a unit that the capacity is wonderful if... They have a makeup partier unit that the capacity is wonderful if they're also running everything in the kitchen. But once you hit a whole week of not using the kitchen, it just made it so the temperature couldn't keep up in that area. It was down in the thirties and forties. So if they had ice, it was definitely thirty in that room. But we've got small electric heaters that'll be mounted on the walls, they're coming in to make up the difference. So that's the way it is now.
Thank you for that, thank you for that information. Mr. Manager, but also, because we're in such a seriously cold climate time, is there any, are we getting information as, as far as homes are concerned or people's safety in the city?
Absolutely. This is unprecedented, that we've had the senior center open every night for a week now, and we had it open twenty-four seven for the entire weekend. We have our co-op program that goes out to the homeless people that we know that are living in camps to get them to come in to the senior center, and we also have the senior center that keeps a vigil on any, any senior citizens that are in need. Remember, the senior center warming station isn't just for homeless people. There are a lot of residents in the city of Lowell that can't afford to maintain their heat in a, in a proper fashion, and we're, we're encouraging anybody that is having problems with maintaining heat in their house to come to the senior center for some respite. There's, there's heat, there's food, and there are beds there if you need to spend the evening. So it's not just for homeless people, it's for any resident of the city of Lowell that is having trouble maintaining heat in their, in their homes.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Manager. Council Newn?
Through you two managers, what step been taken with the libraries and other schools that also have the heating problem as well?
Well, what happened, and I think Council Kennedy can attest to that, he was on the phone with me last week, and the heating system in, in City Hall was clanging so loudly that they, you can, can you explain what happened and why that probably affected the library, what you did with the City Hall?
When it got really cold and the steam pressure in the boilers automatically go up, it started sending a lot of steam throughout the building. This is a combination, one pipe and two pipe system. It's different than a house where sometimes the heat goes through and returns through another pipe on the outside, sort of like what baseboard does, but with steam. If you have steam radiator, single pipe, the water, the steam goes up into the radiator, condenses and comes back down. When it comes back down, it hits against the steam coming back up, because it's so cold trying to make up the temperature, it starts shaking the building. It actually, the office that we had to go to because of it was the manager's office, it was the worst. It was actually shaking the pipes on the wall. It was that bad. So we lowered the pressures down, bypassing the computer, and that made it so it was a little cooler in the basement in the first floor of the library. It went from a little cooler to getting worse as the week progressed. But we were also having problems maintaining temperature in this building. In the hallways, it was actually pretty cold. So things, and I'm just looking forward to when it's thirty degrees again, because it's gonna be wonderful. Because right now, with the temperature that we have, it's just a battle of, especially with the older systems. We did a great job a few years ago putting in new boilers and things, but we just fixed the heart of the problem. We didn't fix the radiators, we didn't go into the classrooms like in the nineteen eighty building, we didn't do any of that. It was all just piecemeal. We, we paid, we did what we paid for. And then that leads to the problems. But the radiator's shaking, shaking off the wall, that, we have to do stuff about that. And that was lowering the pressure, and that decreased the pressure going to the library. Because believe it or not, the boilers that are in here feed the library too. And they just convert to hot water and go out through the system.
So by bringing the temperature down here, we negatively impacted the library, so they've overridden that, and now the library's getting better.
So the same happened at other schools as well? Is that's what happening now?
Yeah.
So assuming that the next couple of days, the temperatures was to really going up a little bit, that mean that, that problem solved itself?
It's not gonna solve it, but it's gonna be better than it is, and it'll be, give us time to catch up on what we're doing.
Okay, so, so what that mean is that at some point, after the high school, taking care of the high school, you then go into those other school and to take care of those problems?
But we have been going in, as the calls come in, if there are emergency calls, we have been going in. We have parts ordered for the unit at Pawtucket Memorial that's causing the administration problem that they have right now. We have parts ordered for the Washington School, we have contractors coming in to do some repairs. So we're trying to catch up with it right now, but we should be all set.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Council, no, Council Mercia first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, this morning, while listening to the radio, a gentleman called up, said he was taking care of an elderly woman, and because the landlord wanted the elderly woman out of the house, he shut off the boiler. And they asked, he asked Teddy, as a matter of fact, what could be done, and he gave the number of City Hall and said call Departmental Services. So I'm sure that they must have a report as to what happened. Is it possible we could be notified as to what happened? It would be a shame for someone to get away with doing such an egregious act to an elderly person.
Did they say what the address was?
They didn't, but I'm certainly, Teddy gave the right information to call a city inspector and gave the city manager's office number, so I'm sure someone, I don't know what happened, we were busy today, I'm sorry, but I'd like to know if we could follow that up as to what's going on.
Yeah, I'm on this, I'm on his show tomorrow morning, so I'll ask him for the address.
Okay, sure, thank you.
We'll follow up on that.
Council Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we all are hoping that it gets back to thirty degrees again. This has been unprecedented, I think, at least in the, in modern times. And it isn't just Lowell that's having the problem either. I think Everett has closed their high school for the same reason. I think Fitchburg, Peabody, many other communities are having similar problems with their, their school buildings. School closed this morning for two hours, and that wasn't, that was because of the school buses. So transportation becomes a problem too, because school, they couldn't get the school buses going this morning, and that was the reason for the two-hour delay. So everybody will be glad when it's gonna get, get a little warmer. I mean, I'm kinda pumped that tomorrow it's supposed to get up to twenty degrees, and that's like a big deal, I guess. So I, you know, I think that everybody should realize that, that the city's trying to do the best that they can with, with trying to rectify the problem. But I do think that, that, you know, it's a dual problem here. You know, on the short term, we wanna get all these buildings heated up the way that they're supposed to be. But long range, we should try to make sure that we take steps so that this doesn't happen again if there's another cold spell next year, for instance. And so we need a long-term solution as well, Mr. Manager. And I just would remind everybody that I think a couple of years ago, in the capital budget plan, the city council appropriated some four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I think, for improvements, for, for the school department for improvements. And I think much of that money has not been spent up to this point. So the school department should realize that they have that money available to them, and if, if it's necessary to spend that money now, then they should, they should go, go and do so. Thank you.
I wanna thank the manager for that information. Anyone else? Council Elliot?
So just on the other schools, Mr. Manager, are those gonna be open or closed, or are the school department gonna be sending out a notice to those schools that were closed today, or they're just shutting down the district, or case by case basis? Because it does get confusing for folks that have daycare, et cetera, so.
My conversation with Superintendent Calfawi was, at this point in time, just the high school was being closed.
Okay.
Thank you. Council Leahy?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, do they, so it looks like we're gonna get snow, so we might have two days to work at the high school. Are we waiting for parts also, or like by Friday, do you think we'll?
Question is, are we waiting for any parts at the high school, or is it?
Yes, on the rooftop units up on the nineteen eighty building, we are waiting for pumps. There was an eight-week lead time on it, that's coming up right now, because we did order them in advance of this. We should have them by the end of this week or the end of next week. That's how it was gauged. We have a lot of the small parts we bought in advance, and we've been repairing those as they come up. But like I said, we'll go up there in the rooftop, we'll find some of the reni boilers running great, and then the next day, we're up there replacing parts in those same boilers. So again, we are waiting for parts, but they're due in any day now.
Okay. Because it does look like the weather's gonna warm up, and then we're gonna get a cold spell over the weekend, and then it's gonna be back into thirties by next week, so. But I was at the high, high school the week before, and I mean, the guys are doing a great job, they're walking around, they're getting the heat going, and I think I was in two classrooms that were cold. So, I mean, it's been running fairly well this year, considering, and it's been a bad cold snap, so I think, you know, it's gonna happen, but we're dealing with it. Thank you.
Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the, to the manager. I, I hope this isn't true, but I'm wondering, are there any rooftop units that shouldn't be on the rooftop? Because I heard that there was.
Not that I know of. There, there's no, no, there are none that shouldn't be there.
There's some of the older ones that have been dismantled all the time.
May, Mr. Green, come up to them.
There are some that are gonna be coming off the roof at the twenty-two building, some of the older units, if that's the case. And we've got one old unit at the Butler School that we're gonna be removing, but that's one's gonna be replaced.
All right, I just heard, and you don't know what you're hearing is true, but someone said that a rooftop unit is on the roof and it doesn't belong on the roof. It's not a really a rooftop.
They're describing the reni boilers, those are at the high school. That's a boiler that's attached to the rooftop units, and when they put those rooftop units on, they replaced an older style that actually could do air conditioning and heating at the same time. One zone off that unit could do air conditioning, and the same unit, with the same airflow, would also have, be able to heat a classroom that's just right beside it. They replaced it with a more modern boiler, called the reni boiler. It's very similar to what hot water heaters are now in house, in houses, the single-stage hot water heaters, they just hang on the wall. Well, they hung them on the outside of the units. When they first come out, we had a lot of problems. The last couple of years, we replaced most of the old ones with new ones, and we haven't had as many problems. We do have individuals where you're replacing the igniter or sensor or something like that, but that's usually, you know, a half hour and you're all done with that part. It's actually running better than they were before. But again, with the new high school, that, we won't have that problem.
Okay, thank you so much.
Council Leahy?
I just have one other thing. I'm sure we're keeping track of all this, right? So when that nineteen twenty-two building gets renovated, we'll be able to get reimbursed for some of these costs, right? I'm sure we're kinda taking a look at it strategically and changing what we need to, and some of that's gonna be for the renovation, so we'll be able to get credit for that, I would assume.
Not necessarily. We are looking at the roof, you know how we're doing the complete roof, whether we're gonna have to now replace that roof again, but we won't be getting reimbursed for these repairs. They're separate from the construction of the school.
Just in case, save the receipts.
I know, but we, we did, we, we did point out to Perkins Eastman that we're putting on that one point two million dollar roof, and wait, we'd hate to reinvent it if we didn't have to.
Council Milonazo?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Manager, the city manager. It sounds like you're obviously doing a good job, yeoman's job, in trying to get things back up and running. What's the current status of the AMRESCO contract? And my second question has to do with, I believe years ago, when we were doing some retrofitting over at the JFK Center, we actually brought in a tractor-trailer unit that was actually a heating and air conditioning unit that sat out in the parking lot for a good year or eighteen months. And I'm just wondering if that isn't anybody's planning thought process, that in the event that we can't fix it as quickly as we'd like to, we could just rent a unit that would be as big as an eighteen-wheeler, in order to make sure that we provide heat? But again, getting back to the AMRESCO, I just don't know what the current status of their contract is, and whether they are still providing consulting services to the, to the city.
I'm not aware of any consulting services that they're providing, but I will get an update and report to you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is everybody all set? Any?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Newn. Motion by Elliot.
I think it's over.
You want this back?
I know that, I know that. But I, no, I think everybody knows.
Happy New Year.
People wouldn't wish for our kids.
Yeah, really. Yeah, really.
We got a bit of beauty this weekend.
This is for the mayor. From his desk, yeah. See? See, I was wrapping nicely. I told you. So I cleaned his desk for him. But still, though, I have it clean. Good night. Thank you, see.
We're gonna stop paying.
Ready to throw some CFMs and BSI? We're coming down with a phone. We're gonna move things, you know, and then just adapt. This is a beautiful place. I might have to go visit some children's.